... to order, and I would ask an indulgence of the commissioners to please lean in and turn on your microphone. We did not record some commissioners' discussions at Tuesday night's meeting. It will be most helpful. Please.
Commissioner Baer.
Present.
Commissioner Wells.
Here.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Present.
Commissioner Duckham.
Commissioner Tompkins.
Present.
Commissioner Mahoney.
Commissioner Williams.
Present.
Commissioner Alwell.
Here.
Chairman Chatwell.
Here.
At this time is your opportunity for public comment. You have three minutes to address the board. You can only address the board once under this public comment. The opportunity may not yield your time to others. Board members will not debate nor answer questions at this time. So first, public comment.
We had another mass shooting in Texas by another white Christian male. I want to talk about the response from one Texas congressman, though, Representative Matt Schaefer. This is a quote following that shooting. "I say no to red flag pre-crime laws, no to universal background checks, no to bans on AR-15s or high-capacity magazines, no to mandatory gun buybacks. What can we do? Yes to praying for victims, yes to praying for protection, yes to praying that God would transform the hearts of people with evil intent, yes to fathers not leaving their wives and children."
Peter, please don't yell.
Yes.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
To discipline in the homes. That's this Christian scum suggestion. Let me talk about where this violence comes from. We're going to pray to God to stop it? Have you ever read the Bible? Do you know how venomous a text that is? Let's talk about judges. "And the Spirit of the Lord mightily came upon him, and he found a new jawbone in an ass and slew a thousand men." Just replace jawbone of an ass with an AR-15. Numbers. Have you saved all the women alive? "Kill every male among the little ones, and kill every woman that hath known a man by lying with him; but all the women children that have not known a man by lying with him, keep alive for yourselves, or do to lie to me. Kill all the people which the Lord thy God shall deliver thee; thine eye shall have no pity on them." That's what that guy driving down the road, he had no pity for anybody, right? Joshua, "And they smote all the souls that were therein with the edge of the sword, utterly destroying them; there was not any left to breathe." Or Isaiah, "The sword of the Lord is filled with blood; it is made fat with fatness in a great slaughter." So what we have are these Christians going out and slaughtering other people.
Good morning. Lillian Carlson Ritter, Jackson County, Leoni Township. Yes, we need different types of gun control. I'm married to a retired police officer who's in security at Henry Ford, which is now taking over. And I've worked for a law judge in Ann Arbor. I finished the Jackson Citizen Police Academy. I hunt, I shoot. We need more medical facilities for the mentally ill, which Henry Ford is working on. Many of you, I'm sure, about the new building going up out on Mount Hope Road. It is just the beginning. This hospital here, I'm sure, eventually will have more openings and facility for mental health. It's not about the gun, no more than it is the car. If you read the paper this last week about how many people were killed in Michigan by people racing to get through the red light, people setting bombs. We've always had this, but we need more facilities such as way back in the late 40s and early 50s in Wayne, Michigan, Eloise Hospital, which was a facility for mental health. We can't blame everyone who carries a gun or uses a gun that that's going to stop. It's not going to always be a gun. It'll be a bomb. It'll be a knife. It'll be drugs. It'll be whatever they want to get their hands on. The last one was turned down for a gun permit. So how did he get it? He got someone else to help him. So it's also the biggest problem we have is mental health. And we know that in Jackson. I know a lot of people that are working on that and working towards that. So let's not blame the Bible and Christians. We have a lot of other people out there that claim to be other types of belief that are carrying guns, that are shooting, that are killing. And like I said, it's not going to be just a gun. I worry about Henry Ford Hospital. We have people coming in there all the time, as you saw here just a month ago, tried to jump out the seventh-floor window. He didn't have a gun. He was mentally ill. So until we get busy and correct our area and help clean up and make facilities for mental health, it's not going to change. The drug is the worst thing in the world we have. The gun is not always the worst thing. And people like us, we're licensed, we do the right thing, don't take away from the people that do the right thing. Thank you very much.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Seeing none, approval of the August 6, 2019 study session.
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Questions? Corrections? Deletions? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Duly carried. Mr. Overton, the public hearing for the 2020-2021 budget. Administrator Controller Overton. I need to entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? Duly carried. Administrator Overton.
Thank you. That's all we'd do this morning is ask the finance director to come up and present the budget, and then, of course, at that point, we'll open it up for our public hearing comments. Anybody who would like to comment on the budget is more than welcome to do so. And, of course, as a public hearing, you know, we can have an exchange of dialogue. And if Kofi could put it up on the board, or the screens, rather, for folks, that'd be helpful, too. Thank you.
I'm working on it.
You got it?
Yes.
Oh.
I have it under control. So good morning. I am very happy to present a balanced budget for 2021, and we'll just start going through it. And as we go through it, if you have questions, feel free to ask, and... This is all I can do. I've been played with, I've been playing with it. Okay.
Your mic on.
I'm talking into it.
Okay.
All right, there we go. All right, so... So we want to just start off with our 2025 strategic plan that USS commissioners approved and voted on and was part of the meetings. And just kind of, we're going to be implementing this starting January 20th, or January 2020. And so these are pretty much the new key performances. Our organizational values didn't change, so... So next thing we want to just talk about is our general fund history and of the expenditures. One thing that I just want to point out, a change from 2019 to 2020, is that we did move the animal control and shelter and the Department on Aging's budgets into their own respective millage funds. So it's all being reported together. It's out of the general fund. Makes it easier for the directors to run their own reports, to see where they're at, and it also makes it more accurate as to what the general fund is actually supporting. Any questions?
I have one question.
Yes. Do you want me to go back?
Can you get back up to that previous slide, please? Along the tops of these columns, the total budget for 2020 is in red.
Yes.
What is the significance of that being in red and the others being in black?
I just wanted to point it out that that's really what we're focusing on, is 2020. That is the new number. There's nothing special about it. It's just more of a be able to point it out in this spreadsheet.
Okay, thank you.
So next thing we want to talk about is our 2020 revenues. So basically, again, as we had made on April, back in April, we had a presentation that talked about our revenues and how our revenues were broken down. So in this case, this is very consistent with what we had presented before, is that our taxes are 57% of our total revenues. Of that, $23,600,000, $23,600,000 is property taxes. That is an increase of $578,000 from last year, which is about 2.4%. And that is in line with the presentation we also presented in April, where we were projecting our revenues would go up between 2% and 2.5%. Any questions? Same thing with our 2020 expenditures by type. The percentages are very, are in line with prior budgets. There isn't anything significant that to point out with the expenditures, unless you guys had some questions.
Cecilia.
Yes.
The last slide, did you, what did you say on taxes? Did you say $23 million?
Yeah. So the total property taxes that were at for this budget is $23,654,397.
Why is that showing $25 million?
Because that is total taxes and it...
I see.
That's everything.
Besides property.
So that's why I wanted to bring, break out, let you know how much was actually property taxes, but we, yes. again, being compared to 17 and 18's actual, 19's budget, 20's budget, and 21's budget. And again, keep in mind, animal control and the Department on Aging has been pulled out, so of course, that's another reason why the expenditures are showing less for the 20's budget compared to 19's. Are there any particular questions on this? And this, this slide is just showing the difference between public safety, judicial, general government, and the transfers out. In the next couple of slides, it will break down who's in public safety and who's general government and judicial. So public safety of our budget, 27% of it. That's our sheriff, road patrol, et cetera. General government's 20%, and these are the different departments that make up our general And then judicial's 22%. And then there's a really great picture of you guys, of our border commissioners. And then social services, 1%. And then we have our other. Were there any particular questions that you guys had on any of the other? Yes, Corey?
So how much is the judicial up with, with the addition of the state requirements on the public defenders?
Actually, it's down.
It's down?
Yes, because actually, all of those expenditures, revenues and expenditures for MIDC have been moved over to their own fund. The general fund is actually contributing about $300,000, along with some revenue that's a net amount. So there's really no change, I guess, if you want to put it that way. But because we do have to cover the local match, it's like 500-something thousand, so... But it's not in the actual category. It's actually showing up as a transfer out. Because we're having to move it to the MIDC fund.
Okay. Weren't we anticipating that the prosecutor was going to have some more costs on that side of it that was not going to be covered by state funds?
Our prosecutor?
Yes.
The county's prosecutor?
Yes.
That's one of his concerns.
Okay.
But we don't have any...
We're not budgeting for that, though. Okay, thank you.
No.
Question?
Yes.
Where's the Health Department in your numbers share? I kept looking for it, I couldn't find it.
Yeah, that will be in some other slides in a little bit. Right now, we're just talking about general fund.
Okay.
But, good question. So here is a spreadsheet that shows all the general funds departments broke for their budgets compared to actual, their 19's budget, 20 budget, and 21 draft budget. Yes? Tony?
Under the transportation, the 2021 draft revenue is down $25 million from what it was in 2020. What's the reason that the, we're assuming the revenue is going to be down $25 million?
Right. So basically, the Transportation Department, I don't believe, is Christopher here? I'll let Christopher speak, because he knows more, but...
Also, in the same time, the Public Improvement and Building Fund is down, projected to be down $2 million.
It's, actually, I think they're actually...
So just wondering what caused us to predict such a lower revenue?
Not sure which slide he's on.
It's, I can, you guys can go ahead there, but it's down, the revenue expenditures down because not every year do we get a word of a grant, not every year do we get a township voting to do a millage and giving us, you know, then they go ahead and borrow $10 million and give it to us to do roads, different things like that. That's why that goes up and down. Our revenue for transport, from, from the state, MDOT and for JDOT, has been consistent and, and actually on the rise per the formula and everything, and, oh, you guys are ready? Go ahead.
Yeah, correct. When, when we issue bonds, it shows up as a revenue, so it artificially inflates our revenue. It's not our baseline revenue over time. So back in, when we go forward into 2021, we're not anticipating any bond revenues for that year, so we're back to the, the normal revenue plus, which is our MTF plus grants and our contract with the Michigan DOT and other township contributions.
Okay, so you're comfortable with the 2020 projected revenues?
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you.
We were very careful with that, worked with Cecilia, got our projections from the state. Our crystal ball works magically, so...
All right, thank you, Chris. Then the Public Improvement Buildings, why is that down, projected down to be $2 million?
All right, so for capital for '20, the only, the only departments that are having capital are the ones who are funding it with their millages, which we'll talk about in a little, in a little bit. So for '21, we don't have a plan for capital right now. So that's why it's down. The only thing that is showing up in there is animal shelter, and it's their projection for their 2021 amount for their building, so...
Thank you.
I wait and see how things go with '20 to see if we'll have capital for '21, so...
I do. Thanks, Cecilia. I've just got a couple of questions on the page that you're on. First, is the Human Resources, that's anticipated to be up by about $45 grand...
Right.
... next year over this year.
So basically, for HR, they have an organization structure changes that were approved by administrator and the board that the HR director has implemented into his budget.
Okay, and then the next one is the public defender. So that's a substantial movement, and is that because you've split the expenses out? It goes from $1,200,000 down to $467,000.
Exactly. So with the public defender, all we think, the only expenditures that are in the public defender general fund department are non-criminal cases. All the other expenditures have been moved over to the MIDC fund.
Okay. And then down to the county sheriff, the budget goes from $4.5 million to $4,593,000, up a little bit, $91,000, I guess, by my math, and other areas below that are up also by a little bit. Reason for that?
A lot of that is just going to be because of the pension. If you, if you remember, we're having to pay that extra million for the annual required contribution. Those departments, especially the sheriff, have a lot of people who are in the DB plan. So that's going to be, along with their raises and that type of thing, but there isn't anything in that department, line item-wise, that is different than in the past. Their cost is mostly because of employee benefits and wages.
Because bottom line, public safety is down from one year to the next on the budget, correct?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Great questions. Anyone else? All right. So this is the second page. And again, the new fund, that's just showing where we're moving the expenditures out for animal shelter and control and also for Department on Aging. And here's just another line, a graph, just to show where, which departments have, where they're falling in within the general fund.
So this, this graph here is general fund expense, so it's total general fund expenditures by department?
Yes.
Okay.
Exactly.
We've usually, we've included this in the past, obviously, to give us sense, everyone a sense of where the bulk of our money goes, and, you know, I think it speaks volumes for itself.
Yep. All right, and so the next chart is showing our, our updated organization chart. Just a change on this, if you've noticed, Assistant Administrator has four departments that are being reported to her now, and everything else remains the same. And it does show how much FTEs we are closing this budget with in total countywide. And that is accounting for four FTEs, reductions for sheriff, one for the prosecuting attorney. At the Health Department, there's this 4.4 as a reduction. District Court is down by one, but we do have plus eight for MIDC. So how this budget, this general fund budget was balanced, at the end of the day, we were short about $1.5 million. We identified $644,000 in cuts and $83,000 in revenue increases. $408,000 for a reduction in FTEs that I just mentioned, $236,000 were other expenses, which I will, I'll break that down for you in just a second. The other was a savings and health insurance. The general funds portion was $745,000. The breakdown of the other expenses, we had a correction to the budget for our liability event insurance of $100,000. We had a reduction in the IT department for employee training of $20,000. Also, in the IT department was $5,000 in computer software. We had a reduction of $57,000 for credit card fees, and this is attributable to the G2G that you guys signed a contract in last, at the board meeting. And then we also had elimination of the Jackson Traffic Safety of $30,000. Questions? All right. So where this budget leaves us, board policy does require 18% to 24% of annual expenditures. This results in a range of $8 million to $11 million, and we're projecting our fund balance at 2020 to be $8,871,994, or 19.1%. So it is at the lower end of the policy, so I just want to keep that in mind for everyone. So our largest other funds is our, is the Health Department.
Go back one slide a moment.
Sure.
Well, that's at the lower end. Is that enough for us to cash flow between now and when we start receiving property taxes?
Yes, I'll be fine.
Good night.
Won't have to bond for...
No.
Okay.
Can I ask a question there also? Mike, is that the fund balance, is that where the SRI payment has been coming out of?
No.
Okay, thank you.
All right. All right, again, so Health Department, JCDOT, childcare, and the Department of the Court are our four other largest funds. Here's a spreadsheet. This shows all funds, so general fund is included. This also shows the Transportation Department that Mr. Baer was actually, I believe, pointing to earlier, where it does show the reduction in the 21 budget. But these are the other funds that we have countywide in their budgets.
So this spreadsheet here shows the total amount of monies the county spends for everything we do. Is that why I...
Yes.
I believe Dave has a question.
Cecilia, right down towards about a medical care, MORE, is that supposed to be MOE?
It is supposed to be MOE, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate that. And then we have a slide here that does show the breakdown of JCDOT's revenues. And again, it's 17 actual, 18 actual, 19's budget, 20's projection. And this is how their, their revenues are broken down. Same with their expenditures.
Cecilia, can I ask a couple of questions on this? I had a highlighter in my hand last night when I was looking through this, so unfortunately. So the, a couple of marks that I've got are on the local line for the 2019 budget. We've got $17.5 million versus 11.4 on the revenue side. Is that from the projects that were bonded for the townships?
Yes, they do build the locals for that.
And then down to the federal line, we got $5.3 million for 2019 and $10 million in 2020. How did we get there?
They're expecting federal funding for '20 for their projects.
That much of a jump? Because it, it went from $1 million in '18 to $10 million in 2020. That's a tenfold increase by my math.
Yes, that's correct. Do you remember the federal aid we purchased? It actually shows up here as payback when we complete the projects. A lot of those projects are being programmed for next year.
How much in total did we purchase Ballpark, if you remember?
It was about $6 million or so.
Was it that much?
Plus we have Michigan Avenue Bridge and other projects, so it's pushing $10 million.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right, so the next, the next part of the budget presentation has to do with our, is to talk about our capital projects. And again, I believe it skipped one, the graph. So here's a graph, and again, the ones, the departments that do have projects are Parks, Recreation, Animal Shelter, and also Transportation. And this, this is the funding for those projects. The millage, where it says Animal Shelter and Parks, the parks have $549,700 of their millage monies, and Animal is $486,809. And again, that's just an installment on her building purchase, project that she has. And this is the breakdown. And this is the breakdown. Um, so the last slide that we want to talk about is, excuse me, sorry to lose my voice. Apologize, is our, um, tax rate requests, our millages that we're using to build this budget with, um, and the rates that we have. So. Alright. And then we have a thank you slide. Couldn't do this by myself at all. So I appreciate anyone's help and support. Any questions?
If no questions, I would turn back to the chair for the public hearing portion or continuation and conclusion.
Question. Okay, go ahead, sir.
Um, we talked about this last time with the health department and the child safety seats. And we're going to do that as a off the books thing with volunteers and so on.
Can I please?
Last time we talked about, um, the child safety issue with the health department and that they decided to cut the $500,000 for the child safety program. Um, uh, my question is, is that are we going after outside donations and corporations or whatever agencies to replenish that? Or are we going to just leave that alone? Because I think that's really more important than the animal shelter.
Well, the animal shelter is a millage, sir, and the health department is not a millage. So that's dedicated funds that has to go to the animal shelter.
Okay.
So there's, the, the, the public has spoken on that. I suppose if we want to have a, uh, health department millage, we should run one.
Okay.
And, and be appropriate on it. So, and I agree with you that the child safety seats, and I spoke about it this morning on the radio. It, it's, it's a touchy situation. Um, we have mandatory laws, uh, but again, no funding from anywhere with these laws to enact and be, and take care of them. And unfortunately, we have to make some tough decisions setting up here. And I suppose if someone would like to make a motion to direct the county administrator to reduce the budget again by that difference, and I, we're at reducing staff, we go ahead and reduce staff. Um, and Michael will do what we ask him. He may not, he will be reluctant in some cases, but he will do what we have to do.
Okay, thank you.
And I, and I will be happy too to do the will of the board. I have no problem with that at all. So yes, David?
I've got one more question on budget first, but I wanted to talk with, uh, about that. So we continue to talk about other sources potentially funding that. And realistically, during the conversations that we've had, the most appropriate place for that program to reside, I think, is at Henry Ford Allegiance. That's where, uh, most of the births are in the county and where people leave the hospital from, uh, with their babies. I also recall that for the longest time, the Jackson traffic safety program, uh, funded at least part of that, I think. Is that completely dried up, that money for the car seat program? Yeah. Uh, so we have to acknowledge that. That's another potential source that, and I suppose they could make that a priority. But, uh, I think our administrator could also work with the health department to ask the leadership there to find another funding source for that. Could you not, Mike? A private funding source?
We, we already have. Um, there, everyone, there's a number of people looking, you know, um, discussing with other organizations, um, both be it public and private, um, in regard to the child seat program. Uh, again, though, just to, to emphasize, it's not administration who made those decisions of what would or would not be cut in the health department. What we do is we ask each department to look at their budget, figure out their priorities, and, and to make cuts that will have the least amount of impact. Or perhaps, uh, and they're thinking, uh, where they believe they can also garner, uh, additional source of revenue outside of our own entity, the county government. So, uh, the health department is, I know they've agonized over their budget, and they, they've come to the board and they've made their, their requests, and I believe it's appropriately done.
I, I'm not being critical of that at all. I understand that and agree with the process and how we've done that. But I, I'm just like the rest of the commissioners, trying to think outside the box and encourage that department, uh, to try and find alternate sources or an alternate provider for that service. And I think, uh, we or they have the ability to do that. So, and I'm in the middle of an email right now to a constituent who sent me a 10 paragraph email, uh, on that program. So, uh, back to the budget, uh, page 27, if you could pull that back up, Cecilia. It's got the, uh, list of the millages and the expiration dates on them. Uh, the senior services millage, if I'm reading this accurately, expires December of this year. What's the plan with that?
We are going to go to the voters with an, an update for their millage in 2020.
It would be in 20, so next, next year.
So the last time we collect on this is on the winter taxes?
Yes. So it'll, the bill will go out in December and people will pay in 20.
Be the May election? Did I, or?
No, it's up to the board here what, uh, they would like to do. But it'd be May, August, or November, uh, uh, probably in the middle would be my choice. But, you know.
And if it goes too late and it passes, you won't get the summer collection then, correct?
Well, the, the thing is, we need to, um, have it approved so we can send out bills come December of 20, or else we would be, uh, short.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we, it's, it's one. Thank you, Ruth.
Any other questions? Okay.
Let me take this.
I will, I will, I will.
Leave it up. Okay.
Any public comments?
A couple meetings ago, we were informed that 911 was not within the budget. I mean, we, we had some taxes that were on all phone calls that were paying for that expansion and that remodeling and the new personnel. Could someone brief me on what's happening with that and why they're over budget and how is that being taken care of?
Yeah, it's true. Um, dispatch 911 is primarily funded through a dollar fifty charge on every phone line, be it hard line or cell phone. Uh, and initially, when anticipated, when we actually went out for that, because remember, we were at 48 cents, something 43 cents, 44, thank you, 44 cents a few years ago, oh, we went to 150. Substantial increase. Uh, but in actuality, given the cost of the radios and everything we just purchased, uh, it puts us short. Uh, that in addition to four supervisor bodies that we have added to dispatch, because they were, they didn't have supervision. And, uh, so now we contribute general fund dollars, uh, and we'll continue to do so for the foreseeable future. The only alternative would be to go back out to the voters and ask for an increase. You can go as high as $3. I believe Lenawee is $3, um, and some of the other surrounding communities. Uh, our board at this time is, uh, I believe, I believe for now, we're in a position where we can continue with the dollar fifty. If it ever gets to a point where we need to ask the voters, well, then this is something this board would need to decide.
So what, you anticipated that that dollar fifty would cover the expenses. So in the process of budgeting, there was, shall we say, not a clear eye in terms of how much the expense for the new equipment would be and how much the personnel costs would be? Or what, what exactly happened there?
We ended up buying a whole lot more equipment than we thought we would, uh, have to buy, for one, which drove the costs up. And then the other part of that was, uh, the lack of supervisors. In the sheriff's department, they used, uh, like road patrol sergeants, uh, especially at night, uh, for supervision. Um, problem is, they were never actually at the facility. As you can imagine, it is important to have, uh, someone, uh, in charge.
Alright, um, that brings me to another comment, and I have long wanted to eliminate sheriff road patrols. Um, as you know, in many other counties, they've been eliminating townships that want that service paid for. And so I think that should take place here in Jackson County as well. Thank you very much.
Any other public comment?
Just want to say, first of all, very well presented. This is my first time ever attending one of these. And, uh, can you give us an overall or close to how much these budgets, the new ones, are going to affect the taxpayers? Uh, percentage of what our taxes will go up? Have no idea.
Oh, it has no effect at all. All this is preset at the county level.
Okay.
By state, and then it'll be reduced by headly again.
Okay.
So, uh, if your house appreciates in value, then your millage set against it will, uh, be equivalent to that by division.
Yeah, by townships and, yeah. Yeah, that's, a lot of it with the state, I don't always understand, because they have one set, the county has another set, and the township has another set. Uh, it's very good. And by the way, I just want to compliment all of you. This is my first time at one of these, and it was very well presented and, uh, very pleasant. Thank you very much.
Any commissioner comments? Seeing none, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
A motion and support? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Duly carried. JC dot MTF bond presentation. Mr. Overton?
The, um...
Mr. Chairman, just as a point of clarification, the budget itself is going to go to the full board, and do we need a motion for that?
Uh, it would be, it would be, it would be nice.
Entertain a motion to move to the full board with the budget presentation for 2020, 2021. I have a motion.
Support.
And support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Duly carried.
Preamble.
Am I up?
Yep.
Okay.
Chris, did you see in your email this was a 12-page presentation? Is that what?
It was about 12 slides within the 50 that matter. So I'll wake you up when those slides happen. I have this rehearsed to about 12 minutes if there are no interruptions. So. Are you set? Go.
Alright, hang on. Can you see the, everybody have it pulled up? Thank you. Well, uh, as, um, your department head over JC dot, I, I, I'm coming forward with, uh, important information today. Um, it's, it's coming on us to bring proposals to you that are sometimes challenging and, um, but this is one of those unique opportunities that, uh, allows us to continue the momentum that we have here in Jackson County. So today I'm going to be explaining the benefits of issuing a bond to help us continue improving our county's 1,600-mile road system and continuing to improve the safety of our workforce and, um, their environment and the effectiveness of our operations. I really think we should be proud of the fact that, um, we are, uh, in all 83 Michigan counties amongst, uh, the leaders. Um, in fact, we're performing a survey at this time to see just where we rank on a per capita basis and a per mile, uh, per dollar of MTF revenue spent. We think we're in the top three statewide for improving roads, uh, since the road funding bill was enacted. So stay tuned for information on that. So, uh, I'll just begin here with, uh, um, let's see if I can get to the next slide. We're going to cover three things. Review of challenges and successes, um, which will help to, help, uh, illustrate the, the rationale for, for what we're proposing here. A quick look at economic factors as to why the timing is critical and right, in my opinion. There are times when it's absolutely not right to borrow money, and there are times when it is a very wise move. And we happen to be in one of those situations now. And then lastly, we'll take a quick look at the bond proposal in general terms. Of course, every project and every purchase would be approved by the board, but we wanted to illustrate what we'd be using the money for. Uh, I want to just give a preface by saying, you recall whether we approved the purchase of, uh, seven plow trucks per year last year? We're receiving the shipment of those seven plow trucks this year, and the plan all along was to do some kind of financing for those plow trucks. So they have been received. We have the invoices. In fact, we've already funded the money and paid them. When you issue bonds, you'll see in the motion a 60-day, um, pullback. So we go back to July and we're allowed to wrap in expenditures already paid. So that's one critical piece of why we're coming to you right now, is so that we can pay for those plow trucks with this initiative. So review of challenges and successes. This is one of those important slides with a lot of information. As you, as you know, and as I've mentioned already, we have an aggressive road improvement plan that is moving along extremely well. A variety of primary roads have yet to be constructed, but they're in the pipeline through M dot channels. Uh, we have 6.1 million dollars in federal aid purchase, broken down as you see there. And we gain about 20 cents on the dollar for those. So we're able to pave over 70 miles of road through that program that otherwise would not have been possible if we had not issued the bonds, uh, the $30 million road bonds a couple of years ago. Uh, that was not planned at that time. That money was actually set aside for other projects, uh, including Blackman Road Project Initiative and so forth. So we, we made a strategic move to move forward with that, and, um, we're all the better for it. Bridges, as you know, Moon Lake Road, we'll take a look at that. West Michigan Avenue is a very expensive bridge coming forward next year. And we have smaller structures that are popping up all over the county that need attention. So we need to set aside some funds for those. Local roads, 30 match, 30% match required. It's a first come, first served basis. We have constantly told the townships that if they bring a plan forward, we will do our best to, to match, um, their projects. Uh, basically an unlimited uncapped program with the board's blessing, of course. And so far, we've been able to do that, which is unprecedented statewide.
Chris?
Yes?
Are there any, sorry for the interruption.
Take it off the clock.
Yeah. Are there any other municipalities or townships that you're hearing of that are contemplating doing what Spring Arbor Summit and Blackman did, or not?
Not at this time, although, you know, we stand by the phone waiting. Uh, we have capital plans put together for them in case they are interested. It's more, um, project by project inquiries, which is fine. We will work with them. You might remember, uh, both Concord and Palaski looked at, uh, partial road millages, but nothing as aggressive as these three townships.
And those smaller projects are also due because they're easier to do, right? I mean, we're more inclined to have match money for it.
Correct. It's a much more manageable pace for our team. We can, yeah, match more of the, the project and so forth, yes. The thing that's unique about, on that note, Spring Arbor Summit and Blackman is there's a huge concentration of our, our mileage of roads that needed attention. So a lot of our patching efforts and, and maintenance monies were being spent in, in the metro area here around Jackson. And so when these projects are complete, we're going to be saving a substantial amount of money on maintenance costs for, in perpetuity, basically. So we're very thankful for what the voters have done in those townships. So then there's other special road and road-related projects. I just want to call your attention to the M dot matches required at Cooper, at the interchange. Uh, some of the unique projects that have come forward in the last year that we've been able to do using our, our bond funds that would not have been possible, uh, otherwise. So this is Maple Dale, project we're all familiar with. Uh, the before, um, the picture doesn't quite do it justice. The road is washed out, but it's in horrible condition. And this is what it looks like afterwards. A remarkable improvement, really improves the quality of life in our community and the safety of our road system, per the mission that the board has, uh, the charge the board has given our department. And this is Moon Lake Road Bridge. Just in case we forget what it was, as a one-lane structure with holes, literally you could see the water through them. We had cut it to a one lane, and, um, we secured a grant for 900 some thousand on this one point, uh, two, five million dollar project. Uh, here's some of the construction, and here's what it looks like today. And you give us a few more weeks, it's going to look more like this with the stone colored. So a very powerful example of how we have leveraged the county's funds, uh, the bond funds that we've received, uh, to make things happen in our community. Another example is our Robbins Road Bridge, where we were able to take, uh, a road closure and quickly convert it within a matter of a few and quickly convert it within a matter of a few, a few weeks. I think within a six-month window, we had that road back open with a new 50-year timber bridge structure, thanks to the fact that we had these funds available to us with new guardrails that meet federal standards. A lot of our bridges and structures don't have these guardrails, which are a huge safety concern. This is something that we're looking at for the Pope, Pope Church Road Structure, a little arch to it. These are just photo examples, but you recall approving that at committee here recently. Would have been kind of a generic structure, more like Robbins. However, just to add the arches was a very small cost increase, so we're planning to move forward. We want to add some character to our bridges. So that's just another example. Here's another one of those slides to pay attention to, critical. Equipment facilities. This one is packed, so let's take a moment and digest this. Back in 2014, when you blessed us with a $14 million bond to improve our fleet, we were able to get 2% money, which inflation on our equipment is running 5% to 7%. So you're basically getting, getting a rebate on the future by buying now and we can achieve all the efficiencies today. So what this slide really says is that that bond has paid for itself about three to five times over, every year in perpetuity. How so? Just chip sealing, and I'll show you a quick video in a moment, saves us between $500,000 and $1 million a year with the new equipment that you've blessed us with in perpetuity. We do chip seal between 50 and 100 miles per year to save the pavement and it saves about 10,000 a mile with the new efficiencies we can achieve by doing full width and with these 50-ton haulers, as you see in the bottom, bottom right of this slide. Then the four new 50-ton live bottom haulers, as pictured in the bottom of this slide, save us approximately $1 million a year, which is incredible. One of these semis is equal to five dump trucks, five drivers, five engines with fuel, five wear and tear truck issues. So it's about $260,000 per year per semi that we have. We have four of these now and they're in huge demand, they're used every day and we're proposing to buy some more of those to help with efficiencies. We can't use them everywhere, but we use them everywhere we can. The road recycling program, as you know, and as you've heard, saves us at a minimum of about $2 million per year over traditional construction. And that's with a 50-mile program that we're shooting for. We continue to try to improve efficiencies and effectiveness there, as you'll hear more about in a moment. The plow trucks, I'll show some photos in a moment. With the wings and the new salters, they improve our service and responsiveness, reduce operator fatigue and drastically reduce our salt waste, actually. So there's only two plows needed on routes that used to require three, for example. And M dot reimburses JC dot. I don't want this point to get lost today that on the plow trucks that we purchase, if we keep those in the state fleet, we get 80% of the, the cost of those back within three years and we get 60% back in two years. So we basically get plow trucks for 20 to 40 cents on the dollar transferred to our county fleet. So the other big thing that astonished me a couple of years ago was that our maintenance costs dropped dramatically. What used to be, well, you know, close to $1 million a year fixing transmissions, engines, brakes, axles, frames, has dramatically dropped within our budget. That's hard to quantify because it varies heavily from year to year. However, I could easily see moving, you know, $300,000 to $500,000 over towards that debt service easily. So if you add up all these savings, we have not cost our department money, but actually saved us a tremendous amount of money. So let's take a look at some of the efficiencies. One of the biggest is chip seal here. You can see here the stone is applied over the oil. The oil does the magic and it just moves smoothly along with one semi. Imagine doing this, having to switch five times with five dump trucks. Stop, start, stop, start. You get bumps in the road every single time you do it. It's so smooth with these, so having four of these really smoothes out our operation, makes it go a lot faster. Better service to the public because the time that we have to close the road down is much less as well. In addition to the full width chipping behind it comes the full width roller that you see pictured here. That's a very unique invention. We were the second county in the state to purchase those. It does a full lane width, so minimizes the amount of roll time. And then our full width distributors, of which we have two, that spray the, the oil that is rejuvenating the asphalt down ahead of the chipper.
Chris?
Yes.
Will that video be on the website for constituents to see?
Sure, I can get that loaded, absolutely.
Thank you.
We have several others, but for the sake of time, I didn't show them with some of the other processes here, but we could post a library of those. So I just point out, reminding you of our front-end loaders that we purchased. Loader's a loader, but our new loaders have scales in the buckets. So when we're loading salt, we get a much better accounting for that and any other material that we're loading. We know the weight. And then the buckets, they have grapple, grapple hooks on them for tree removals and so forth. Much more efficient than trying to just get them with an open-ended bucket like we used to have. Grader's a grader, but having nice graders helps us to improve speed, enhance our dust control program as we've done and so forth. And our grade all is one of our magic emergency response pieces of equipment, a very expensive piece of equipment. I think it was between $400,000 and $500,000, but it's like the linchpin of any county highway department. Here we are at the fairgrounds, actually, taking out a tree. It's a very powerful, very strong piece of equipment, very versatile. We do it, use it for ditches, culverts, all kinds of things. Someday we'd love to buy a second unit if we could, because this one is booked every single day. We also purchased mowers. Those are reimbursed through the M dot contract and we have a great relationship with M dot. They have been proponents of our program and they've come to rely on us in being progressive and reliable in the services we provide. Another couple of examples is a man lift, which helps our tree trimming program through the winter months and even summer months. But our Vector, this is not our actual Vector pictured, but it shows the versatile uses from jetting out culverts. They might be frozen in the middle of winter, we can still jet them out, to hydraulic emergency excavating. When we've got to dig a hole and there's no time to call utilities, we can literally pressure into the ground with water and then suck it right back out with a vacuum and expose any utilities that might be there and work around them safely. Our pavers and rollers, wedging and skip paving program has come along very well. Our crews are so good now that I would fully trust them to pave a mainline road at this point. Here they are with one of those 50-ton trucks backed up. Again, imagine five dump trucks starting, stopping versus one of these 50-ton haulers. These are insulated, they keep the asphalt at temperature all the way from the plant to the site and they're covered. Clearly you can see the cover on this unit and the conveyor belt just basically feeds into the paver and things move along very smoothly. This, incidentally, was a used paver we bought. We don't buy new everything. We've been very strategic in trying to secure demo units or used units when we can. Shouldering. We purchased a new shoulder unit. The efficiency of this program is outstanding. Again, the 50-ton haulers have been one of the reasons for that, but the machine itself quickly and efficiently puts gravel down on the shoulder edges. We do it very effectively. It's one way that we can provide match to our township projects after a road has been paved, which we could not do easily before. De-burming is one of those ugly things nobody likes, but it's a necessary maintenance function where we have to scrape away some of that burming on the edge of the road to keep a shoulder safe and to keep drainage on the road. You can see in the lower right, the grader moving ahead, cutting, putting material onto the road in a small windrow. Then we bought this Leboy self-feeding loader with a conveyor belt system and the photo in the top left shows how it's feeding into the 50-ton hauler. Again, in the past, we had five, six dump trucks all lined up, five, six employees, et cetera, all that fuel idling trucks versus one semi with another one waiting to come in that's empty and then just head out and empty and make the circle. Much more efficient, much, much more effective. This is one of our proud partnerships with private industry. It was an invention, something we requested and worked on with, with the company here in, in Michigan. And the steel is made here in Jackson, actually. It's now widely sought after as a national device, picks up iron on the, on the roads, Ferris metals. We used to get, you know, 10 to 12 flat tires with our trucks, maintaining shoulders and so forth in our mowers as well. This unit cost us about $8,000, not much, but it paid for itself in one year because we now get maybe one flat in a year versus eight to 12, plus all that downtime that happens. So here's another win for us. I want you to look in the distance. You see several trucks in the distance there in the center of the slide waiting to get their mix. They don't have to drive all the way to the hot mix asphalt plant. We put our 50-ton hauler, we load it up at, you know, 5:00, 6:00 in the morning, we head out with our hot mix covered, insulated. We are there, this picture is taken from the cab of the loader. The loader bucket comes up, gets its load and puts it into the truck for each driver. So they just line up and feed through and get out. So we kind of put up little home base areas and we tell them where we're going to be each day. Greatly improves the efficiency of our patching program, minimizes their drive time. There's no way that they can keep that mix hot in their little trucks, driving down the interstate highway from an asphalt plant.
Christopher, that's the private sector program you have?
That's our partnership with private sector, yes. It's been very successful for us. So we have just two employees, the loader operator and this, the driver of this 50-ton hauler are actually managers of the program, working with those. So when they're not offloading, they're actually out visiting, checking the quality of the patchwork and so forth. So it's a great partnership endeavor. They used to take, you know, 20 to 30 of our employees, now it's just one or two in partnership with private sector. And the quality of the patches has been outstanding. Our Python Patcher is now back in action, we're happy to report. As we get this machine moving, I'm projecting a half million dollar plus per year savings and around-the-clock service, especially through winter months. As we load mix into the hopper, we can work around the clock. It has night lighting, camera systems and so forth, can work safely on state highways. So there's a great deal of interest from M dot to look at this. It is reimbursable when we are using it on state trunk lines. So we purchased one of the new generation. It was kind of a beta version. We wanted the latest version. In fact, we needed it to cross the border with the Tier Four emissions, so there have just been a few problems with it, but those have all been worked out now. So fingers crossed it'll be running as we head into the fall and winter. Here's our old snow plows and we've upgraded to our new ones. In actuality, though, this is actually what we were working with, no-wing plows. So rusted floorboards, you heard the stories before, cold feet for 14 to 16 hours in the middle of winter, no heated windshield wipers, can't see out the windows, things are freezing over, not fun. The salters were old-fashioned and just kind of dumped a lot of salt around, but now we have modernized our salters. They're highly accurate, they're calibrated before we send them out. And you can see the, the wing clears much more of that roadway width using just one operator, just one truck. Here is an example of how we've reduced a plow route that used to take three trucks to only two by tandeming the, the two wing trucks. The first one, the lead, is dumping into the pathway of the follow truck, which is grabbing the rest of the road there. Very powerful and I do have videos of this as well. So one thing we pioneered that M dot really likes is our double wings. This was not done before and we put the wing on the left side as well as the right. And although it has really no use on county roads, it has huge benefits on the state trunk lines. And here we have an entrance ramp where, this is actually a screenshot from the video, both wings down, he's clearing that entire ramp where it used to take him a trip once to do half. He had to go back around, circle eventually, come in and then do the other half of that entrance ramp. Now he can get it in one shot and move on down the road. He'll lift that left wing here shortly as he gets onto the main drag and move forward. So M dot has been very happy with this. Even though they're helping to reimburse for the equipment, the effectiveness and efficiency of our operation has dramatically improved. Something I, I think you'll like here is our intentions to expand the use of one-ton units. So part of this bond proposal is to buy eight of these units, possibly 10. We have yet to work out the exact number that would be effective. Think of the Swiss Army Jackknife. This has a swap loader on it. So instead of just having that fixed box that you see in the top left there, one of our existing trucks, if you look to the right, especially the lower right, the ability to, if we put the swap loader body on it, we can put that box on or we can use a chipper box or we can use a patching box or a salter or just a general flatbed. You can switch between all those attachments. The cost of one of these with all those boxes that we would need is half the cost of a plow truck. So if you think of plowing snow with a V plow in the front of one of these in a subdivision, it's much quicker. No CDL is required for operators and there is a shortage of CDL drivers out there. So we think this is going to gain us quite a bit of efficiency, also in fuel savings and wear and tear on the vehicles. Yes? Stop the clock?
Yes. Where would you propose using these one-ton trucks with a plow on them as opposed to your big plow trucks?
Sure. We think that about two of those would be allocated to the state crew, which is 100% reimbursable from M dot, because we use them for, for cleanups, the park and ride facilities that we plow for them and so forth. The other six would probably be two per garage and we'd send them out to hit the subdivisions. Most snowfall events, you know, we're seeing our, you know, six inches or less, eight inches or less, these, these units would be just fine. The dually's on the back, get good traction, they're four-wheel drive units, nice tight turn radius for cul-de-sacs and so forth. A lot less damage to the front lawns for residents. Some of our big plow trucks, you know, they're, they're meant for highway use and we, over the years in the past, have just thought we needed them everywhere because it was the only tool we had. So we're rethinking, trying to be smarter about their deployment. So two per garage to kind of hit the privates, zipping around essentially while the big trucks are on the main drags.
Thank you.
Running the circuit. Our goal is to have all roads plowed after an event within eight hours. My team, bless their hearts, kind of snickered at me when I first said that four years ago, but it's now becoming a reality. We may be able to even beat that. And I suspect we'll need to buy less of the big plow trucks after we deploy these. We're going to wait and see on purchasing any more plow trucks until we get these in in action. I know that we will need some, so don't get too excited, but it's just trying to fine-tune how many of the big trucks that we need. So our recycling program, you've heard so much about, just real proud of that program. One of our challenges, as you look in the distance of this photograph, is the smoothness of the recycled base. The paving of that, that new base after we ground up the road must be smooth in order to get only two inches of asphalt. Part of this bond initiative would include some special technology that would get that base much smoother so that we can actually realize the two inches of asphalt. We're real excited about that evolution of our program. Our lab, I have to brag about it again, buying this equipment that you approved has saved us $300,000 to $400,000 a year. Mixed designs when they're sent out cost a small fortune per mixed design. We've been able to quickly do a mixed design in short order in a matter of a few days just because we can do it here. We avoid all the freight of sending the, the aggregate long distances and so forth.
Christopher?
Yes?
So asphalt's not just asphalt?
What do you mean exactly? Oh, asphalt is not just asphalt? Not at all.
You said mixed design, you got to mix a different kind of asphalt for a different kind of needs?
That's correct.
You know, that's a big misnomer. Most people think it's just all the same.
And Mike, you've said it well in the past, we put the science back into road building and that's no joke, we really have. I challenge any road commission throughout the state to do what we do in our laboratory to make sure that, that our taxpayers are getting the very best product out there.
Christopher?
Yes?
How many miles per day can you do with that equipment now?
For the recycling?
Yes.
On a good day, we can do a mile and even a little more of road. That'd be two lane miles on a very good day. We still continue to have training, it slows us down a little bit, but, you know, I've told the team, take it slow, we can't afford to have quality problems and so forth. So it's getting better and better. So next year, I'm looking forward to even, you know, a much better season than we had this year. Our tanks were new, we got off to a slow start due to rain and that our tanks that we purchased weren't quite heating correctly. We actually just discovered a problem with the heating system two weeks ago, which has now been fixed. So things are running much smoother now.
Chris, I think it's worth just taking a minute to talk about what, what it, what it takes to get a smooth road. I don't think people... it takes to get a smooth road. I don't think people, I know I didn't fully appreciate it until actually seeing it, what these people are actually doing on the equipment, making adjustments. You know, I mean, they mill it off. You know how the road dips and weaves and so forth and so on, has little potholes or bird baths. And these guys are on the ends here are physically making changes to the paver as it goes to try to get it smooth. And in the end, you know, let's face it, this is newer, newer, newer to our guys. We'll say that. They're better at plowing than they are paving. It's something you learn. And if you pave a road with two inches, inch and a half, and then find that it has some bird baths, in order to get it smoother, you gotta, you can't just necessarily grind it off. You gotta go over it again to get it perfectly smooth.
With more asphalt.
Or with more asphalt, yes. And the technology, just take a second for the technology you're talking about.
Yeah, we're still researching the, the total cost of the technology and so forth. There's two pieces to this. One would be, as you look at this particular picture, you see how the material is being conveyed into the hopper. And we have a special bucket, basically. It's a large 25 ton hopper there that we can fill up. But the problem is sometimes you're starved for material. The road takes a dip on you ahead when you're grinding it. You don't have enough feeding through the conveyor and the paver's using all that to try to stay smooth. So what we want to do, if you know the 50 ton haulers that you've seen pictures of, is we want to modify one and stick it there. So the conveyor is dumping into the 50 ton hauler. That's a huge buffer that can hold a surplus of material, or if we're starting to see it start, we have some time to get some extra material in there or adjust. We've seen some contractors that do that. So that would be one piece of the proposal here is to, to create that extra piece of equipment between the recycler and the paver so that we get the buffer. The second piece that Mike's referring to is something called Smooth Ride. And there's a link, if you Google it, TopCon Smooth Ride. There's some, some cool videos that show what it's all about. There's two aspects. Millimeter paving where literally we scan the road ahead with lasers and we go into the office, use our computers, and we design exactly the surface of the road we want. We dump that by the magic of cellphone technology. We dump the machine file into the paver and the paver has automated controls based on GPS and its location and knows exactly what to do. And the road comes out exactly as designed. So we want to implement that with our paver here and possibly also with the recycler itself so that it cuts evenly. It's what's called a machine control technology. So the purchase of that equipment would be proposed as part of this as well.
You see all the guys, explain those guys, what, how many people are on the back of that paver?
There are three there. There's some training happening at the moment. There's usually two. So you have the driver of the paver. He's sitting up in the driver's seat of the paver up top. And then there's usually two guys, one on the right, one on the left. They're adjusting the level up and down. When you're normally paving, you're only doing on hot mix asphalt, two to three inches, probably two inches or so, inch and a half. There's not much adjustment to do. Those guys on our paving crew, you don't have a lot to play with. With this, we're cutting eight inches and we're trying to pave back about eight inches compacted and rolled. Imagine water skiing. When the boat slows down, what happens? You fall in the water, right? And trying to get back up on the water is a real challenge. So every time the recycler stops, for whatever reason, that screed is floating on that material and it's actually dropping when it stops and it has to come back up when it starts again. So part of our, this technology would, would counter that. And some of it's just human nature. The guys are seeing, are calling it as they go. It's more of an art than a science. We want to turn it back to science and make sure that the machine is, is, you know, doing what it's supposed to rather than the intuition of the guys taking over and potentially causing harm rather than good.
And part of the reason we need the more science is because there's not enough people out there who have the skill set, the art, because every road contractor is up to here with work. And, you know, this, this will take some of that. It'll make, make it a little more viable for us.
It really will improve the speed and the efficiency of the operation. One other idea is just to, if you had to on a road, pave it, pave it rough, but we could potentially just mill and, and kiss the surface, so to speak, at the high points and take it off with another mill. We're looking at that option as well.
Mr. Chair, just two quick questions. How fast is this machine running in terms of going down the road and tilling and all?
It runs about 20 feet per, per minute. I wanted to say second. About a mile a day, yes. It's very slow, but when you can do a mile a day with this and traditional construction, crushing shape, road closures as a result, taking, you know, days to a week, you know, look at Norville Road, despite the strike, it still takes a lot of time to crush a road, grade it out, roll it, compact it. And this is drivable within a matter of minutes. So I don't know if to call on people or if you're calling on people.
I, I had the opportunity to witness Wickwire be accomplished. And I also had the opportunity to experience Horton Road where it runs into Stonewall slash Forest Street. Our crew was in and out of Wickwire with a complete road replacement in 15 days.
Wow.
Two weekends in there. During that time period, the traditional way of building that type of stuff was going on and on and on and on. It's, it's an amazing thing when you stop and think that they did completely surrounding JC in that 14 day period. And I didn't see Horton Road open. And all they had left to put up were streetlights and signals. So the, this, this way of doing road system, I had the pleasure of talking with the guys directly. It's, once that operation gets started, it's amazing. And you're driving on it that night. That's the other part that, that, you know, you don't have a closed road for three months, waiting for, waiting for things. You're on a road surface, be it the recycled road surface, not the paved run you're talking about, but you're on the, you know, you're able to get down that road. You're not, you're not spending three or four months dealing with the situation. So our road replacement system is, is, is very unique and very, very quick. And I consider it quite painless. I am waiting to see how we do where we're doing everything, which is McDivitt, and see how we do out there. But that involves the private sector and utilities and all kinds of stuff. So I'll be interested when we actually take over the road, how quickly it gets done with removal and, and repair.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Chris, on that picture up there, the thing that's pouring dirt into the, the apparatus that's got the guys on the back, is that dirt that go in there or is that asphalt?
That's the ground up road.
That's the ground up road.
Literally taking all the asphalt and several inches of aggregate underneath and we're blending it inside the big machine there with oil and binders and it comes into the paver. If you took a handful of it like this and squeezed it, it's a ball. So when we pave it out smooth, we then roll it and it becomes very hard. No, it's a, it's actually, it's slightly warm, but by the time, it's the heat energy that causes the binding. So the heat energy is lost inside the unit. Right. It's very safe material. You actually have five days to work with it. So when we get extra material, we actually set it aside because we use it in intersections and other places. So it's really an amazing new way of doing road construction. It's a game changer.
So the equipment to the left of that is the stuff that grounds up the road. Okay? Then it puts it into the road making machine here?
Paver.
Okay, paver. Where does it, is it mixing with the oil?
It's mixed inside the machine. You see the tanker in the top left up there? The tanker has 320 degree oil.
Okay.
Which is being added inside a mixing chamber as the teeth and the drum rotate around and grind up the road. So it comes out cool though. By the time it comes up that conveyor and dumps in, it's, it's, it's warm and you can take it in your hand and squeeze it. We actually do that to test. You should have little black spots in your hand if it's working properly because it's spot welding all the little pieces of road together. When you crush and shape a road, you just grind it, it's just gravel again. So this is superior to that because it's making like a Rice Krispie bar of the base, kind of gluing it together. Frankly, it's the best damn road base I've ever seen on local road systems.
Thank you.
Sorry about that, but that's how I feel.
Yeah, I like that Rice Krispie treat analogy. Chris, I'm sure there's an ass coming here and I was fortunate enough to see the process on Rose Hill. I think Rodney was out there with me. I think that was your first road you did.
It was.
And it's pretty impressive. But if I might suggest you let commissioners know when it's going to be in use again. Anybody that hasn't seen it might want to stop out and see the process. Very worthwhile.
Sure. It's actually running daily unless there's some kind of an issue or we're moving projects or something. So if you reach out to me, I can get you in touch and we'll, we'll set up a time, get you a vest and, and give you a little tour. I'd love for you all to see it. It's quite remarkable. We've had a lot of visitors all over the state of Michigan. I get calls nationally now to come and see since our National County Association award. So it's, it's generating a lot of excitement.
Mr. Chair, I just have one other additional question. How long does it take to train individuals to run this machinery?
Well, we have three grades of training. Apprentice, certified, like a driver's license, and then like a master. So you need at least a good season or two before you're considered, you know, to be that, what we call a certified trainer level or a master. But we can get someone certified on a piece of equipment within a matter of a few days, if not even a single day, if they're, they're quick on the uptake. It's not our intention to roll people through, but we are trying to build a deeper bench. We've got kind of a, you know, the starters, thinking of sports as an analogy. And then we have our substitutes and so forth. So our goal, and you'll see a staffing proposal come forward here soon, is to add a, a second shift and a weekend shift to this so that we can run, make hay while the sun is shining through the whole summer. Our, our people are passionate about this. They love what they're doing, but they need time with their families. They need time to take a vacation and breathe. We want them to be safe. Fatigue is a real thing. I've come out and seen them, you know, at nine o'clock at night, nine 30. By the time they clean up, they may not be getting home till 10:30, 11 o'clock. And then they got to be back in at four or five in the morning. So it's grueling. But training is ongoing and constant, short answer. And it just depends what they're running. You know, if you're running the big machine, the 3800 recycler, driving it is easier. That guy on, our gal on top has, it's a, it's, it's just a straight line and you have to know some principles. Being what we call the ground person, the dosing of the oil, all kinds of things, monitoring material and the cutting, that can take a little time. It's more of an art and a science. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Nothing further.
Okay. But you had to stop the clock for all the questions, right? So now it goes much faster. Oh, wait, this was one of those important slides. The super road concept. This is very real. Traditional method has a structural number, we call it a 2.5. That was a target taught to us in textbooks. That's three and a half inches of asphalt over the crushed aggregate base. We are able to do at a lower cost between three and four, sometimes over four in our structural number. Rose Hill is stronger than a four. That's like a, you know, nearly an interstate highway strength for a local road. So they're strong and they're built from the bottom up. The base is very strong and we just put asphalt on the top. That's, that's a switch because the traditional method is the asphalt is the strength and the aggregate is wet and soggy in the middle of spring. So you don't need weight restrictions. We call that durability. All season roads. We design these when they're wet and soggy in that base to be 70 to 80% of the strength of, of the dry strength. So that's what we do in our laboratory to make sure. If it doesn't do that, it fails and we got to figure out a different design. Throw out that cookie recipe, make a new one. And cracking is significantly reduced. Future maintenance costs are minimized and avoided. That's a key principle of this whole program is we want to minimize future costs on taking care of roads. So, and we're able to do the same cost or less. As you know, it's generally 30% savings. Some roads are more, some roads are less. It depends on the particulars of the site and the circumstances. And it's a very green program. We don't have all the extra hauling of new virgin hot mix and so forth. And the greenhouse gas emissions are reduced, and this is well documented by 70% by doing our method. Okay. Economic factors, Fast and Furious. 30 year history of MTF revenues. This is before the 2015 road funding bill. You just need to know that around 2003, things took a nosedive. Road commissions everywhere lost money. We were in a time of austerity, cutbacks, and things changed in 2015 slowly. Because here's a picture of our revenues as a result of the 2015 road funding bill. Now the blue bars, the dark blue in the bottom is where we were at, at 2015 before the road funding bill. So it's kind of a baseline. So as you move, you see the stair stepping. It was phased in over five years. So the projections from the road funding bill are shown in the light blue bars. And then I've actually shown the actuals with the red above. So you can see that our revenues have exceeded year after year, the projections. So when we budgeted, we budgeted for the light blue bar. That was the best available information at the time. But in actuality, as we know, the legislature last year accelerated road funding and we're getting 19.2 million next year instead of the projected almost 17 million. So to bring this full circle, our first round of bonds is based on the green arrow. I took the small increment from the first two years and said, hey, what if we dedicate that to, you know, think of it as a home improvement loan kind of thing. If we get ahead of the curve, we get some construction done, we get some equipment that'll save us money in perpetuity, but we make it manageable. We don't want to overextend ourselves. Now we're at the point where we are, because of the accelerated road funding, able to take a phase two, a next step with this proposal before you today, and still have extra capacity above that red line that, that the arrow points in the future. And so I would just argue that even if road funding held level or were to drop slightly, we are positioning ourselves well by getting a lot of these roads fixed at today's cost and by buying the right equipment that makes operations much more efficient and effective as you've heard today. So let me just explain here the impacts of inflation. And I'm not talking about the CPI. We know that the CPI has been hovering around 2%. The heavy highway industry is very different. Ohio DOT did a study over time and found that the cost of building roads in the Midwest had doubled from 2003 to 2017. So a road that was $100,000 then, you could build about half of that for the same $100,000. So our buying power is diminishing rapidly. And with recent bids, we're seeing a 10 to 15% increase, even 20% on the asphalt prices here lately. It's very scary. So our goal is to try to get some roads built sooner rather than later so that we don't have to just patch together pothole roads in perpetuity. The other big factor is interest rates. This is a 30 year picture of bond interest rates. Now back in the 80s, you see those double digit over 9%, 10% interest rates, bad time to borrow. We all knew that. That's what we were taught. That's what we understood. But over time, you look at where we are today, on the very far right, we're under, we project that with this bond sale will be under 2%, which is remarkable. So when you consider the inflation rate of both equipment and construction, again, it's like getting a rebate on the future. Smart management, smart and strategic financial management. It's like buying your house at the right price with a very low interest rate and then years later, your mortgage payment is 200 bucks when everybody else is 2,000. So. Bond proposal. The bottom line, I just wanted to tell you what our goal was internally over the last few years, was to leverage available resources as much as we can to give maximum savings and increased operational efficiencies by strategically selecting construction projects and equipment that serves to improve our level of service and overall effectiveness. So this is not meant to be read, but it shows you the inventory that we did of all 500 pieces of equipment we have, how old it is, do we even need some of it? We asked some very hard questions internally. And we didn't just pick stuff we needed. We need certain things, but if it's not going to save us money or leverage or improve our effectiveness or efficiency, we put it on the B list. So we're trying to prioritize carefully. Because if we truly wanted to replace everything and have a brand new fleet, we're talking a lot more money. And that would not be something I would recommend to you frankly. So one of those other slides here as we begin to wrap up, when we did our needs analysis, we asked some hard questions. Does it fit well with our two key strategic principles, reliability? I show a fire station here because in the middle of a snowstorm, in the middle of a windstorm, a flooding event, we have to be able to get the fire trucks out of the barn. And we were not able to do that. Mike and I had some conversations when I first started. I was astounded at the fact that we would sometimes have 10 to 12 plow trucks in the garage and it's snowing like crazy. They were not out plowing. They were not able to be out plowing. And so plow routes were taken two days. so plowouts were taken two days, sometimes more, and our phones were ringing off the hook as to why the snow wasn't getting removed. We don't have that problem anymore. We're making a lot of headway there. Bonds do allow us to buy used equipment. We always look at that possibility. That's one nice flexibility with that. And time sensitivity. I just want to point out again that economic factors and the conditions we're in with inflation and interest rates make this a very smart move. So I don't know that I need to read this through. I think I've talked to most of these points. This is a phase-two endeavor. Equipment reliability is a major concern. I think I'll highlight though the last couple of bullet points. Safety is paramount, as you know. Some of our new equipment that we're buying has incredible safety features, and I shake my head at how we operated with some of the junk of the past and thank heavens that we escaped injury and so forth. Some of the safety features are remarkable in our new equipment. Our new plow trucks come with backup cameras, and they're always on. They can see what's going on back there. They can see the salt or they can see, you know, if somebody's tailgating them close. It's incredible what we have available now. But employee morale. We're in a new world where it's tough to recruit employees, tough to retain them, so they have to have a comfortable work environment. They have to have good equipment to use. I've heard many of our employees remark that it's much more fun to work at JCDOT than it used to be. And some of our new employees are astounded at this job is much fun, more fun, I want to say funner than it used to be. So here's a table of what we're proposing. It's about twenty-one million, and that includes the issuance cost. We can, you know, as it has been in the past, we propose each purchase as part of a strategic plan. We explain the rationale for each one as it comes forward. I think you and I both want the flexibility to make decisions, but you can see it's split half and half. Half towards roads, very important, and half towards strategic purchase of equipment, including those plow trucks that are reimbursed by MDOT's contract. So I think this is my last slide here. The financing plan is a fifteen-year Michigan Transportation Fund bond. I want to emphasize that this does not impact the county's credit rating. It is not based on the full faith and credit of the county's debt obligation and so forth. It is entirely issued through the state using our revenues, MTF revenues as the guarantee, as the revenue to pay for them. And I want you to know also that we have remaining debt capacity after this issue, and our debt capacity rises as our revenues rise. So in another year and another year after that, where it's like, again, the mortgage payment that's levelized versus your salary rising year after year. Interest rates, as you know, are two percent, probably less, but they've estimated them conservatively for the illustration. And the debt service for this will be wrapped around our other debt service to keep things level. That's basically a fancy way of saying that the payments will actually be eased over time with, I even wrote it down here, by 2035, we're completely paid off, but by 2027, we actually start to see a decline in our debt service as our revenues continue to rise. So for about seven years, we'll be at the highest debt service, which is still very comfortable for our budget. And I wanted to point out that it is in our budget proposal. The twenty-million-dollar bond issue is in there, and the debt service for it was conservatively estimated. I think I used three percent debt service in the budget. So if our sale comes back at two percent or less, that'll be good news for our debt service moving forward. And with that, I'll take questions.
Chris, just thanks for the thoroughness of it. I'll say that when I first heard of the proposal, I was skeptical of it, and I'm always mindful of making sure we don't dedicate too much money to bond debt. And when I sat down with you and got the Cliff Notes version of the program, I came out supporting what you're wanting to do, and I do appreciate the great detail that you've given us on it. The only question I've got, I asked you that day, was about the facility to store all of our equipment. That's up and just lacking the floor so we have the ability to keep all of our new equipment covered, correct?
That's correct. When I talk to my team, there's never enough storage, and I think they're right. There's a, I'm very pleased with the passion our people have in trying to take care of things. It pains them to leave things out in the weather and so forth. Long-term, we're working on a master facilities plan. Each area garage could use one of these buildings that we're doing, but I'm looking long-term. You know, in a few years, we'll reconsider that. But these two new storage units that we have are going to be a very powerful move forward in protecting, even our snowplows that aren't used all summer will be racked inside and carefully protected from corrosion and so forth. We want to take care of everything we have, and we're working hard towards that culture and organization. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. I also was quite impressed with your presentation. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Just looking at it and being one of the newer commissioners, the initial bond that we're already on the hook for, if I'm doing my math right, is about one point one million a year. Is that correct?
The fourteen million that we issued? Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So we're looking to add another one point five?
Correct.
Okay.
And so what happens is our, because they wrap it, they take the lower interest rate and kind of move the principal payments to the end to levelize the debt payment. So we'll be paying, we'll go up from the one point one million to two point six million, which then drops off in 2034. But meanwhile, we're achieving a lot of savings operating.
I appreciated you putting that in there, showing interest rate savings and historical interest rates. Just wanted to be clear on that. So we're actually more than doubling our bond amount, correct?
Correct.
All right.
Yes. The one thing that I want to point out in light of what you just said is the option to do nothing, in my opinion, doesn't really exist. I mean, we can't just not buy some plow trucks. That's what we did for over a decade and put us in the situation we are now. We should be replacing plow trucks on a ten-year cycle. We have seventy plow trucks, just as one example. So that's seven per year. We're now on that program, and that's where we need to stay to remain healthy. And because of the initiatives that you've blessed us with, we're now approaching fifty of those seventy plow trucks, which is amazing to accomplish in such a short period of time. We're putting them in the MDOT fleet. They're paying for sixty percent of them. We're rolling them out into the county fleet at that point at forty cents on the dollar. A very smart strategy and it's working very well for us.
Understand that. I guess the next question will probably be to Mr. Overton. We're healthy enough to be able to sustain that kind of debt?
Absolutely. In fact, the only problem that potentially could arise is if the state were to substantially reduce the amount of road funding that they provide us. Of course, the caveat being that the state is backing this bond. So it means there, you know, just like we, our good, our full faith and credit for some bonds, like in Leonie and other places, and we're making the bond payment, the state would be stuck with that because, so the incentive is for the state to continue to fund us so that we can make the bond payment. Otherwise, they have to pay it.
And I would argue and add to that, that this puts us in a fantastic position to operate well and still serve our public, even if those revenues were to drop, because we have the equipment to get it done.
This is normal operation stuff that we're talking about here. We're not taking contracts away from the public, from the private sector, anything like that. This is, this equipment that you're looking to get is stuff that is normal for road commissions to be doing or transportation departments to be doing. You know, in the past, we had discussions of the possibility of an asphalt plant. And when, a year ago August, everybody went out on strike and we weren't getting anything, all of a sudden, that kind of looked really smart on our part. But this equipment here, to answer that question, we're not, we're not putting the private sector out of the way. Actually, we're employing more of them with our patching crews and that type of stuff. Is that what we're, what would be a part of our discussion here? I want to make sure that we're not, that we're not overexpanding into jobs and then all of a sudden, we end up, an example, child, child safety seats. You know, the government took over the program, took it away from the private sector, government runs out of funding, and all of a sudden, we're not able to do it. We're not, we're not doing that, correct? We're staying within the bounds of what road agencies do, correct?
We are. We are. There's a short answer and a long answer. But the short answer is yes, everything here is existing services, and in fact, there's even enhancement of some of our private sector partnerships. You heard us address the ten million dollars in federal aid work. That's all going to private contractors. Our engineering team administers those. We have a person in our staff who does paint striping, the mulling, which is privately contracted, the patching, which is privately contracted. He's just, his job is to manage all that work, and it's in the millions. So the longer answer, we continually look at the asphalt plant option, but not in the same way we did two years ago. There's new technology with portable, smaller asphalt plants, batch plants they're called, that could be smart, and we could, we can vet that out here in the coming months and see if that's something we want to do as part of this, but there's more work to do on that. We're very disappointed. Lenawee County can produce asphalt all day long at fifty-seven dollars a ton and pave it and shoulder the roads with traffic control and signage, everything for fifty-seven dollars a ton. We're paying in the mid-seventies per ton, and it's going up. This is very concerning. That's for the contractor to place it, and then we have to pay for shouldering, traffic control, and everything else on top. So it's really probably eighty to ninety dollars a ton. So, and I just learned that of Lenawee's number, it's holding level where it was two years ago, basically. So it's very compelling.
It's because it's supply and demand.
Correct.
It's profit.
Our contractors are very good. They're very capable. Their plants can produce, but the supply and demand, we only have two bidders on all of our work, Rees-Riley and Michigan Paving, and they pay attention to what each other gets. And so to be able to have a baseline production could be very smart for us. That's the honest answer. So, but that would be at the board's prerogative, of course.
Are you saying Lenawee produces their own? Is that why they have the substantially lower cost? Okay.
Yeah. There are two counties in the state that do produce their own. There used to be three, and there were even more. Branch County has an old plant. I'm not sure if they run it much now, but Cass County, I used to be managing director there. We had a plant. We produced top-notch asphalt for about that same price. And then, and we optimize the quality of the mix. There really, you know, some of the testing wasn't even necessary because we knew that we were making the best mix possible. Lenawee is in the same boat, just over the border here, but they guard it closely and they, they put down as much blacktop as they can every year at that price. So they're in a very good situation.
Chris, you know, it seems like with our purchases and stuff with the floor boys and some more, and we have the hot oil tanks, all we basically need to move forward is a mixer. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's exactly right. We've sort of added a lot of the ancillary stuff that I had in my initial proposal because of our road recycling operation. So we already have the pavers. We really just need the unit itself, which is, there are stationary versions, much like Michigan Paving, which is all set up and relatively permanent, but there are modular, like container Lego block style, and then you have boom, your asphalt plant, much like our KMA that we use for the fairgrounds where it's molding, moves around. So we're looking at those units, and the production quality and capabilities are pretty amazing.
Well, that, and you alluded earlier on about the science that goes into the roads in the mix, the correct mix. We would be able to guarantee that, a more effective mix, if you would, it would hold up. I think that's a great idea. I'd love to hear more about your pursuit of that.
Great. We, I just want to tell you that when we pick up mix right now, we're paying fifty-two, fifty-four dollars a ton, low fifties. And remember what I said, Lenawee paves it, places it, signs, shoulders it all for fifty-seven. So when we have to pay nearly that same price just to pick it up for our crews to then go pave it with all that extra cost, that's concerning. You know, I worry with all the work that we have, especially when strikes occur and so forth. One of the beautiful things about our recycling program is we control our schedule. I mean, we have our own issues and so forth to work through with technical glitches and weather. So do contractors. But we are in command and control of our schedule, which, like Chairman Shotwell alluded to, we're rocking and rolling, doing fine. Morale's through the roof. Our people are proud, and things like what's happened with Rees-Riley just won't occur with our team. We have very dedicated people.
Dave?
So just to clarify, the plan for this is to take it to the full board, or are we going through committee with it? We're not looking for a motion here, I assume, correct? This was just a presentation?
Right, just a presentation. Normally, we would go through committee with this.
Okay. Thank you.
And I want to make commissioners aware, as with the past proposal, we'll be discussing this over and over and over and asking your permission to buy stuff going forward. I think if you remember back a year ago, Chris would come almost monthly with the opportunity and show us again what we were buying and where it fit in the budget, where we were at. And he also showed us a lot of savings that they were able to do because they were able to make commitments to purchasing things and this type of operation. And so, as with government, I think we'll be asked to say yes a number of times before we're actually at it, and you have an opportunity to say no each time also.
Rod? Was those effectively called the grocery lists?
Yeah.
Essentially. And we choose our groceries carefully. That's some, I like the pace that we did everything because we'd get done with something, and we'd really roll up our sleeves, get busy on the next, and make sure we vetted out all options. If we went all crazy and just did it all at once, we're liable to miss out on some good opportunities and good deals, and so.
Director Tavion? Congratulations, Chris. Over in my time here, okay, I've gone, I've heard you build a complex, starting with buying the snow maneuver trucks and so on and so forth, three, four years ago by N6, and this is, and you gradually added pieces of the equation, okay, like building blocks. And now it's all coming together, okay, and so on. And there was a lot of grief and people complaining for those three years, but now that it's coming together, it really is a good plan. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Thank you. And if I could just add, when you're out explaining this to folks, remember, half of this is for road projects, but the other half is for equipment supporting road construction and road projects. Thank you. Thank you.
Your twelve minutes are up, Chris. Chris, if we approve this, what's the window you have to spend the money from the bond? Two years?
Three years from the sale of the bonds. So we pace ourselves carefully, as we've been talking about. But the moment you get the money, the interest is ticking, you know, on the money, and you want to put it to use as soon as you can. So we try to keep things moving in a clockwork fashion, as we did with our other projects and bond issues. If, I want to just address that if you don't approve this, then I'm going to have to amend my current budget and slow things down on projects. And the plow trucks that we have now gotten delivered will need to be paid for out of our current cash. So, and our window is here in September to wrap back sixty days because the first check we cut for the chassis when they showed up was at the end of July. So we're fine if we do approve here in September, which is, which is great. There is no waiting period. There's what they call a referendum, forty-five-day waiting. This is This is just, once you give the blessing, boom, it goes off for, for sale and, and posting for competitive bids from, from bond buyers.
This whole presentation is going to be on a website, correct?
It's in board docs now. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Difficult topic.
Do we have any other items? We've arrived at public comment, second time. This is for two minutes.
Peter Born. The reason I speak loudly is because I have a real hard time hearing you guys when you speak, so I apologize for my volume in case this mic works and no other one does. Um, I'd like to say that I support the road commissioner's proposal. Um, I want to say that I'd like him to be really careful with the purchase of some of the equipment that is newer because I know that they've run into some problems where, you know, where they need to learn the equipment, where they need to adjust it. So perhaps just a little more research, a little more contact with people who might have that equipment, might help the transition period after we get it and then we actually put it into operation. Um, I want to say that the roads that have been done under the Summit Township Bond in Vanacook, the roads that were done under our bond around Wickwire, Brownslake Road, they're beautiful. These are roads that at least look like they're going to last a long time and they are incredibly smooth and I was very impressed with the crews I saw out there working. And I go to JC every day, so I had to maneuver around all the closed roads out there. And finally, I want to say that the problem in this country right now is the Christian religion. We need to eliminate this Christian religion. And I don't mean anything violent. I mean, every thinking person needs to reject this stupid evil story. That's what I mean.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, Commissioner comments? Rodney?
I'd, I'd reach out and thank Chris for a, a very good presentation and, um, when this does come about, I'm sure that he's going to look forward to my support. Thank you.
Mr. Bear?
To say I'm a Christian and I'm proud of it.
Any other comments? Any other comments? Seeing or hearing none, we are adjourned.